Hey Jen, do we know who's not attending?
I think that Joy is still on vacation.
Right.
According to her Instagram, I can confirm that.
Yes.
Likewise, I have Facebook.
Rachel looks nice. How about Ben?
Marco, this is Hannah. I didn't receive any other indication that people weren't going to attend, so unclear on Ben.
Okay. Thank you, Hannah.
Are we still missing alternate, like two alternates, Marco?
Oh, I thought it was one. But I'm not 100% sure.
It is one and think we've tried a letter to the editor and advertising in the newspaper and pleading with with people. I'm open to other suggestions.
Oh bribing at this point, we're down to bribing.
Bribing or we could stand on one of the street corners with a sign, you know.
I'll leave that up to you some.
Thanks.
Well, Ben was just here. Is he still here? Oh, there he is on the bottom. Okay.
Hey Ben.
Hey Pete. All right, well, is this, this looks like we're right for tonight. So everybody ready? Should we get going? All right, cool. Well, hello, everybody. It is 6:01. I call to order the City of Glenwood Springs Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. It is July the 27th of 2021. This is our regular meeting. And we are still on Zoom. This should be our final Zoom meeting if I understand this correctly. And I hope so. Web ID webinar ID for tonight is 867-8842-2208. If you want to call in, it is 166-9900-6833. And with that, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Dem.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver.
Here.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Here.
Commissioner White. Commissioner Schacter.
Here.
Commissioner Whissing.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Waller.
Here.
Excellent. Thank you, Jen. And as always, item three on the agenda is the receipt of the minutes and we will start, let's see, with the May 10 2021 minutes. I'm entertaining a motion to receive those minutes.
Commissioner, do you want to see Commissioner Waller as a regular?
Ultimate. You're absolutely correct. So backtracking, entertaining a motion to seat Commissioner Waller for tonight's meeting.
I'll make that motion.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Can we call that a second, Carolyn? I had like three motions come in at the same time.
Motion, I'll be a second.
Motion in a second. I guess Jen call, I'll call for the question.
Commissioner West.
Yes.
Commissioner Whissing.
Yes.
Commissioner Schacter.
Yes.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dem.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you. Welcome, Pete, for tonight. Back to the minutes, entertaining a motion to receive the May 10 minutes.
Go move.
Thank you.
Second, second.
And a second. Any discussion on the May 10 minutes?
Are they always labeled draft until we approve them? Okay.
I think so.
All right.
For the last decade at least. And something like that. I don't know. Yes. Any discussion? See none, we'll call for the question.
Commissioner Schacter.
Yes.
Commissioner Whissing.
Yes.
Commissioner West.
Yes.
Commissioner Dem.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver.
Let's stay.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Yes.
Commissioner Waller.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And second set of minutes tonight, also draft form, Sumner, June 22, 2021. Entertaining motion to receive.
Move.
Second, second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on the June 22 minutes? No. Excellent. Jen, call for the question, please.
Commissioner Schacter.
Yes, except.
Commissioner Whissing. Commissioner Sipperly.
Yes.
Commissioner Waller.
I'm staying.
Commissioner West.
Yes.
Commissioner Dem.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver.
Yes, and I can attest that I did watch the video for that meeting and prepared with all the readings.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaver, does that, is that pertaining to our first continued hearing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody else in the commission that can make that statement?
Yes, I can make that statement as well, Marco. I've watched the video as well.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Waller. So we're all on the same page here and moving on to item number four on the agenda, which is comments from citizens that are appearing in front of us for items that are not on the agenda. And if you're in the attendees column and you are here for not any particular item, but just to talk to us, please raise your hand. And see none, so we'll close the public item number four and we'll move into item five on the agenda, the continued items from last month and we'll start with planning file 5820, consideration of a major site architectural plan. Thirty-six units, thirty-six multifamily building. In the Meadows. Excellent. And Hannah, did you take over?
This one's.
It did.
Thank you, Chair Dem and Planning and Zoning Commission. Great to see you tonight. Excited at the prospect that this might be the last little box that I see of all of you, so. This is the continuation of the hearing for 5820, a major site and architectural plan review with a variance and also a special use permit. So there are three action items on this. And do we want to promote the applicants now or yeah? So Richard Meyer should be on there. Applicants, if you could raise your hand so Marco can identify you, that would be helpful for Lofts Phase Four. I believe Haley is also here.
And then if any of the phone numbers are part of the team, it's star nine, I think, to raise your hand.
All right, let's just get through the, yep. This one, there we go.
Good evening.
Good evening. Is this it? The four members? Is that what we had?
Yes, I think Bob Moore may be listening and Haley or attorney might be listening also.
Oh, she's here.
Okay.
Yeah, we moved her over. Then we have K5, MQD8. And then I have, I have four more attendees, but if you don't raise your hand at this point, then we'll move on. Okay, excellent. Welcome. Thank you. And back to Hannah, I think.
Great. So thank you, George and Pete, for watching the video and catching up on all the items from the last meeting. I don't have a presentation for you tonight. I'm just going to go over a few of the items that were brought up by commissioners and then some items that the applicant will also bring forward and we can go from there. The first item that I want to bring up is actually a change to the conditions that we have during the course of the last month. We have a revision under the major site and architectural plan. Condition number eight on your staff report, page 15 or page 27 in your packet. And this condition is in regards to the developer paying a per unit fee for intersection improvements on Midland Avenue. We are removing that particular condition. We have another condition for the developer that includes them constructing the improvements as stated in the traffic plan. So that was, that was a choice by staff in conjunction with the developer to remove the payment and go with them constructing the improvements. And if there are questions on that, I'm happy to answer that later in the comment section. We also had some questions from commissioners regarding the storage, so I wanted to take a minute and just confirm that this project is meeting the residential storage requirements, which is one cubic foot of storage for every three square foot of residential area. So that equates to a requirement of just under 8,000 cubic feet. There is an attachment that was added in your materials where the applicant highlights those areas where tenant storage is located and they exceed that 8,000 square cubic foot threshold by quite a bit, just in the tenant areas identified. And unidentified are actually additional areas within the units themselves that count towards that requirement. So by staff calculations, they're exceeding that storage requirement by about double. Um, I also wanted to, going to share screen here. There was some discussion on height and so I did want to take a minute and share the, in the architectural set. Getting to it here, on the elevations, that shows the comparison between phase three, this is the one here. Phase three and phase four, just so that we're all on the same page. Let's see how, maybe we can get that a little bit bigger. How's that look? Pretty clear, hopefully? So we do have a special use review for the height of this building that's required, that's up to 60 feet. And so there were some questions on comparison to other phases of the Lofts. So on the left, you can see phase three, which is not quite as tall as this building. Because there are, phase three has three levels above the parking and as pointed out last time, what we're reviewing tonight for phase four is actually four levels above the parking level. And you can see on this also the height on that side that's being requested, it actually extends to 53 feet. So the special use review is required for anything above 40. They have actually just asked for the maximum of 60 to allow a little bit of flexibility, which is the same request that was asked for phase one and two. Those buildings, which are on the south side of Wolfson, measure 54 feet in height and their special use review request was for 58 feet. So phase four is going to be very similar in height structure to the first two phases on the south side of Wolfson, but will be a story taller than the adjacent phase three that's across the landscape terrace area. So I did want to call that up out for clarification. Also, we, the applicant, it's not in your packet, this was more verbal, so there wasn't a document to include. Commissioners did ask for some information on demographic information of the other buildings, the first phase one and two, phase three is not leased up yet. So the applicant does have some information to share with you. Staff did just want to point out demographic information from other projects doesn't fit into the review criteria for this project under major development, sorry, major site and architectural review. So take it as some interesting information, but should not weigh heavily on or at all on your decision of the project itself. So just a friendly reminder that that falls outside of the criteria for review. But Richard can speak to that aspect a little bit later. So tonight we have three action items for you, the first being the special use review for building height to exceed 40 feet, requesting for 60. Action item two is a variance for the building length as identified. And action item three is the major site and architectural plan. Staff is recommending approval of all three items with the condition change as noted. With findings and conditions on page 13 through 15 of the staff report or page 25 through 27 of your packet. And with that, I will turn it back to you for questions or for the applicant. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Hannah. Any questions to staff at this point from the commission? Please raise your hand if you do and we'll start with Commissioner Schacter, please.
Thank you. Hannah, I appreciate the the comparison of the heights of the two. Do we have, can you tell us or is there any visual that tells what the height is of the motel across the street directly to the, I guess, would east of this proposed building?
I do not immediately know the height of that.
Okay.
I could dig around on my computer right now to try and find that for you and over the course of the meeting, Sumner.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you. And have there been, again, I know this is, I don't know, what do we know the effect of level of all four phases, assuming they're approved, assuming this is proof height on on sun and snow on Wolfson Road as our engineering department or somebody told us what, what the impacts could or couldn't be or whether they're negligible?
I know Jessica Bowser is in attendance tonight. If she has any comment on that particular comment from Commissioner Sumner.
Um, I, we have not evaluated that. I don't, that might be better answered by, by Matt Lee Mars or our street super. I don't know that it would have a significant impact or not.
We don't know. Okay. And I guess the last question, partly for the record, Hannah, even though you've mentioned it, I believe in your staff report. This applicant is not required to do any inclusionary housing based on our recently passed code amendment. Is that correct?
That is correct. This application was submitted prior to that requirement going into effect.
And also of record, this applicant has not chosen to do any inclusionary housing or voluntary fee waiver, waiver that would increase community housing. Is that correct?
Not that they have indicated in their application materials. No.
Thank you. I think that's all my questions right now. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Schacter. Any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Waller, please.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. So one, one thing that I heard Richard say when I watched the video was it sounds like most of the buildings out there are greater than 125 feet on the width. So it sounds like it's pretty common. So asking for that variance is not uncommon. And I guess my question is, is, is if that's the case, you know, should the, the PUD or the Glenwood Meadows zoning district or whatever the heck it's called, should that be changed to a larger number? So we, so I mean, if that's the common thing and, you know, I, I understand, you know, Richard's logic behind, you know, for the hydro compact soils, parking garage, all that made sense to me, but that's, it's just like a and, you know, it's probably not about this application, but I'm just kind of tossing it out there.
That is a in comment. And yes, all of the phases have requested this variance from the Glenwood Meadows standards in building length. So definitely something to take into consideration for any, if we're going to have future development coming in here that might also have to utilize that.
Okay. I mean, it could just be the same thing every time, I guess, is all. Then the, the next question I had was, and I know Hannah, in your package, you had, you, you showed the Midland intersection changes so that condition eight, then instead of being the $500 per unit, now it's the developer paying for the, for the intersection improvements. Could, could you just put that up and just kind of show, because I, I saw there, there's several different intersections when I look at the traffic plan along Midland that were in the traffic plan, so.
So yes, clarity on that. The traffic report indicated some improvements to East Meadows and also the intersection of Wolfson and Midland. Let's see here, not quite. Basically extending kind of a merge travel lane onto Midland Avenue. And I don't think it's in the site and architectural plans. Let me see if I can pull that up.
So it's, it's at both of those locations, there really is where that is.
Yes, that's the two that we're talking about. And if you're familiar with the area, when you're coming from the community center and, and getting on to Midland, there is a tapered lane there to allow for that, that merge movement. Requesting or the traffic report indicated improvement could be made to that particular intersection with some restriping and then also a little bit of accommodation at the East Meadows intersection that does not have that tapered merge lane currently.
Okay.
Those are the items that the condition for the developer to construct.
Okay, that's good enough. Yeah. Yeah, that's good enough for me. So, so is it both of those locations, the one by the community center and the other by whatever it is, PetSmart or whatever that place is right there? Yeah. Okay, the next question I had was, so, so were there any comments from police and fire on, for this project? I know when I looked through the report, there was the engineering comments, but I know on another time, on another project that shall go unnamed, there was no comments when we did our review and then when it went to council, the police stepped up and had some comments and that sort of thing. So is that, does that mean it's, you know, they, they, they have no issue? Is their comment no issue or is their comment, they didn't comment?
So we to our refer the police chief. Is my audio okay? It seems a little feedback.
Better now.
Okay. We did send this out and had the full review by all of our agencies and there were no comments from our police department. And we do set comment deadlines for that. Every once in a while, something, you know, slips through or, or something needs to be added. So there is occasionally the possibility that we will add a comment later, but I have no indication from the police department that they have an issue with this particular development at hand.
And that's the same with the fire department too. I know I saw, you know, throughout the project several times it mentioned, you know, this is not a fire issue and that sort of thing. So I just wanted to.
Yes, both of those departments were present at our department review meeting where we went over the plans with the developer as well. So a lot of times they might not have comments because the, the issue or if there was an issue was ironed out at that particular meeting. And then you get the presented outcome of, of those possible changes, if there were any.
Okay, thank you. And then the, the last question I have on this, you know, so, so where's the parking for phase three? You know, I mean, they're kind of right next to each other is, and maybe that's for Richard or something. I don't know, but is, is there any conflict on parking, parking between three and four? Cause they're right next to each other or is?
I could answer a little bit of that staff side. And then if Richard wants to follow up, that's fine. So phase three has some part, some dedicated parking on Wolfson and so does phase four, but they are separate. So phase four is meeting all of its parking, residential parking requirements at this time. I can't recall right off the top of my head on phase three, if that was the same. Maybe Richard can address that later. But there is not an overlap between the two developments. They have their own dedicated spaces that are meeting the requirements. As well as the underground parking for both.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? To Hannah. No, I gotta, I got a quick one. Did we get any more comments, public comments, any public comments coming in?
I did not receive any, even though you gave out my email at the last meeting.
I think I did. Yeah. Okay. But you didn't get anything. Okay. Then excellent. Thank you. Would the applicant add a few things, like to add a few things?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all the commissioners for reviewing this this month also and appreciate the comments last month. And we appreciated the comment on the storage was useful. It always takes a good reminder just to relook at your plans one more time. And as Hannah said, we almost have double the amount of storage that's not, that's in the building, that's not even in the units is what's required. But we were able to go, go back and find some more space like that. So we're really thankful for that comment because it improved the building and and as you all know, the storage is a, is very useful with bicycles and, and kayaks and all kinds of things these days. The Commissioner Schacter had, was curious about the number of, of people that, the number of employed people and what percentage worked in Glenwood Springs and I did a calculation on that and I believe it's around 60 to 65% that are employed in, in Glenwood Springs. And then the question about the sun on Wolfson Road, the you know, we, the Wolfson has been through a couple of winters now with phase one and two completed. And because those buildings are four stories and on the south side of Wolfson, that would, has more of an impact in theory on Wolfson than a phase four obviously does because it's on the north side. So in the wintertime, obviously the sun's, you know, coming from the south basically and the phase four really shouldn't have any impact whatsoever on, on Wolfson. I question on the height of the hotels, I don't know the exact height either, but I'm pretty sure they're both four stories, at least. The many times I've stayed in Marriott Courtyard, I'm pretty sure I've been up to the fourth floor on that. And then with respect to the parking, each, as Hannah mentioned, both phase three and phase four had their own independent parking. There's not an assumption of any shared parking whatsoever. And in fact, really the parking counts for both are in excess of what will even be needed. But so there should be, you know, plenty of, of parking. But so there should be, uh, you know, plenty of, of parking provided. And then, um, this building, uh, we're asking for a variance of 15 feet on the length. It is by far the shortest building of any of phase one, two, or three. Um, I think building three or phase three was approximately 300 feet long. Hannah had had up on the screen earlier, a view of part of phase three and then the south side of phase four from Wolfson Road. And it's interesting on, uh, there's, there's only about 70 feet of the building that, of length on, um, the side of phase four that faces, uh, Wolfson. And then between that, the phase four building and phase three building, you saw the big open plaza that is actually basically at sidewalk level. So people that are walking along the sidewalk along Wolfson will be able to look right in between the buildings. And there's quite a big gap there, uh, for, you know, obviously they'll be looking right across our plaza area, uh, which will be landscape with seating and they'll be able to see right across, uh, over to, you know, effectively the Colorado River and beyond. And so, uh, even though we're asking for 15 more feet along East Meadow, uh, the building's only 70 feet long. So it's much shorter than, um, the, the maximum length on, uh, on Wolfson. And then which creates the, the nice plaza area. And then finally, on that same, um, elevation that, that Hannah had on the screen, because Wolfson rises, uh, goes up in elevation as you go to the west, the phase three building, as you could see, uh, the top of the phase three building is just a few feet shorter than the top of the phase four building. Uh, even though the phase four building is four levels versus three levels for the phase three building. And that's simply because, uh, you know, it's going up, uh, going up the hill. And so the, 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 the ground floor of the phase three building is significantly higher than the ground floor of the phase four building. And similarly, the phase one and two buildings are, because they're going up the hill, up Red Mountain effectively, they're even taller as far as just, you know, elevation from sea level. And, uh, so, uh, we think that, uh, the phase four building, as we mentioned last time, uh, it's, it's the smallest building by far, but also I think it's a, an appropriate scale with the hotels to the, uh, to the east and building three to the west. And I, that's pretty much, uh, I think we went through a lot of this last time. I didn't really have any other comments, but I'm certainly can answer any questions hopefully.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Uh, any questions to the applicant and the commission? And we'll start with Commissioner Shaver, please.
Thank you. Looking at, um, bicycle storage, it looked like you had a lot of that for your residents. But I didn't see anything outside if a person were to come visit there on a bicycle. Is there any storage available around the, the site for people visiting?
You know, I think, uh, I think it's required and we will certainly do that if it's not shown on the plans. I'd have to go back and look. I don't know if we've actually identified the exact bicycle rack locations on the outside of the building, but we'll certainly do that.
Great. And I assume that you charge extra for people to park in the, the parking garage, uh, which, which is part of your, you know, satisfying the, the required parking. What do you do if, if not enough residents want to pay that extra fee? How do you, how do you satisfy the parking requirement under that scenario?
Lower the price.
Just bring it. Okay. Let the market, uh,
Yes.
speak a level.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay. Let's see, I had one more question and it slipped my mind at the moment, so. Maybe I'll think of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Zippoli, please.
Thanks, uh, for this presentation and, um, I appreciate your explanation of the storage areas. I, I think most importantly, there's enough inside the units, although I noticed there's about half as many storage closets as there are apartments. And I guess I'm going to figure the management's going to have to work that out. Who gets a closet and who doesn't? Perhaps that it's also something that you pay extra for. My other question was about, um, controlling access. Uh, how would you intend to keep the public from parking in the eight spots that are outside the garage door? And also I think last time you said the public's not allowed to go down and use the hot tub and terrace area. So are those intended to be fenced off?
Yes, they, uh, in fact, I think we, on that one elevation that Hannah had, I think you kind of see a fencing on that terrace area. And that's part of the, uh, just the access control system to the building. In phase one and two, we have, uh, your key is actually in your, in your cell phone. So there's, there's an app that is your key to your unit. And then it also accesses the common amenities, uh, which would be the same system here. Um, and then with regarding to the surface parking, um, you know, in theory, uh, obviously when you have parking lots or parking spaces, uh, that are outside that aren't fenced in, in, in theory, someone could park there, not illegally, but you know, effectively, um, improperly. And the man, the building management would keep track of that. And then if we notice that, uh, there was a problem, um, we would either, you know, talk to the owner of that car, um, or you could even do, end up with a sticker system where you have to have a, you know, a sticker on your windshield and where to park there. And potentially even subject someone to towing. If you get to that point, what I've noticed over the years, if, even if you put a sign up that says violators will be towed, everyone hates to be towed. And so pretty much that ends the, uh, you know, the cheating that goes on.
I'm sure it won't be much of a problem, uh, until at least the, um, the restaurant gets developed. It seems as though there's plenty of parking, uh, right there at the time being. One of my other questions is about accessibility. I do see you've provided an elevator, so, uh, I would also assume that you're meeting the minimum requirement for ADA. But what about the terrace? I see that there is a proposed entrance shown on the terrace, but does it just, does it go into the club room? Or is it a more public entrance for, say, somebody who is in a wheelchair?
Uh, well, it has, it is, uh, wheelchair accessible. The, all, all the amenities have, it's required by law, they have to be. And so, uh, the, um, oh, I was looking at the roof terrace, I was going to, yeah, walk through that briefly. But, um, yeah, you can get, get to it through the, uh, the club room, uh, basically, uh, as, as you saw there. But that would all be wheelchair accessible.
So anyone who, who has a room key or a apartment key would have access to those doors?
Correct.
But if you have guests out there and your guests are in the hot tub and the homeowner goes inside, then what happens? An offense, right?
Yeah, they might have to call you and say, uh, well, if they're in the, in that area, they should be able to get back in. It, but, uh, you know, obviously in theory, if someone climbed over the gate or the fence, but the, that shouldn't happen, uh, very often, I wouldn't think.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And on to Commissioner Schacter, please. You're muted.
There we go. Thank you, Richard. One question, uh, one of my questions is just for background and information. At this particular point, are all, um, four phases owned and operated by the same entity?
No, we, uh, um, just recently sold phase one and two. This, the same management personnel is, but is there, but, uh, it, it, um, has new ownership group.
Okay. And does that ownership group then control the rent levels? Is that as they change ownership?
Of phase one and two, yes. Yep.
You know offhand whether that created an immediate raise in rents, even though that doesn't affect your unit right now? I'm just, just for background.
I haven't heard, uh, I, I haven't heard that, uh, rents have gone up, but, uh, I, I don't know that they have not either. They could have adjusted a few units or something, but I haven't heard of anything dramatic occur.
So based on what you know, um, prior to the sale at least, and, and current, uh, current conditions, what would be, what would be typical market rents that you're anticipating at this point, realizing it may change for at least phase three?
I mean,
I mean, I mean, phase, yeah, phase three.
Four.
Or rather, yep.
Generally be about, um, 1,500 a month to probably around, um, 2,800 a month or so. Depending on, you know, whether it's a one, two bedroom and so forth.
So 1,500 would be studio?
Studio or one bedroom.
Or one bedroom and 28 would be two bedroom?
Yes. Yeah. Exactly.
And, um, I know all these variances have been granted in terms of length. Um, I believe you addressed it a little bit last time, um, that if the variance was not, um, granted or not even asked for, that would, that would eliminate the, um, terrace area. Is that correct? Or I guess I'm asking what would happen if you were in compliance with the, with the current length requirement?
Yeah, I mean, basically, um, it would, you know, we could just effectively sort of move, you know, potentially the, the 15 feet from the one end over and kind of start wiping out part of the terrace, which doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but, um, for 15 feet. But, um, we'd rather keep the spacing between the buildings bigger like that. But that would be kind of the, the logical change, I guess, if, if one had to do that.
And good. Thank you. And, um, are, are, were phases one and two fully occupied basically?
Yes, uh, at least, um, as of a couple of months ago. Yes.
And my last question is a little, maybe a little harder, um, and you can choose not to answer it, but not a single, as we, as we mentioned, not a single one of these phases has offered any community housing whatsoever, either about, and it's all been voluntary until this point. Could you address the council, uh, commission as to why?
Well, I think the, the ordinance was just passed in, I think, March or April or so. Obviously we started on this years ago, but what, one of the main reasons why is because, as I mentioned previously, the cross section of our residents is a wonderful cross section of Glenwood Springs, um, from, you know, as we mentioned before, carpenters, bus drivers, nurses, teachers, retired people. There's even some unemployed people, uh, baristas, um, bank tellers. So I know that's not technically the definition of community housing per legislation, but it's community housing. I mean, it's, the community is living there and it's workforce housing. It's the greatest definition of workforce housing there is when you get that kind of cross section of jobs. And, and I'm, I, I couldn't be prouder of kind of how it turned out as far as the community that's there. I've talked to so many residents that are, you know, thrilled to be there and they appreciate the quality and it gave them an opportunity to maybe live in a residence that was higher quality than they were previously in, in Glenwood Springs. And, you know, in effect, it freed up maybe a, a slightly lesser rent or lower quality residence somewhere in town that someone else can move into. And, uh, you know, so, uh, even though, you know, like our rents aren't inexpensive, but it's interesting how, um, people even with, I'd say modest incomes have figured out a way to afford them.
Thank you. And, and which, last question, I appreciate, um, your patience, Richard. The 40%, you mentioned 60% working in Glenwood with a nice cross section, which is great. 40% would you say are a combination of retirees as well as people working elsewhere in the valley?
Well, when I said, uh, it's around 60 to 65%, I believe, of the people that are employed. So retirees, I didn't count as
Retirees.
Part of the percentage, but you're right. It's, uh, the, the, beyond those people would be retirees and then effectively it's sort of up and down the Roaring Fort Valley. As you can imagine.
Thank you very much. I don't have anything else, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
All right. Thank you very much. Any additional questions to the applicant? No, see none. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
I'm thinking since we didn't have any additional comments, is anybody in the attendees list here to, uh, actually comment on this, uh, application? Cause I'm not sure I'll reopen the, uh, uh, public comments at this point, since we didn't receive any over the waiting period. So, um, I see no hands go up. So I think we're going to move on to, um, a motion. Uh, in planning item 5820. And we have three actions and I'm entertaining a motion in action item number one, which is consideration of a special use permit for a 60 foot tall building.
While you're waiting for that motion to come in, um, I was looking through our planning files, um, to get that height for you, Sumner, on that hotel. I actually wasn't able to find that in our plans, but just looking aerially, uh, Richard had mentioned it is four stories above ground, just to give you a comparison there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Hannah, while I'm still waiting for the motion to come in, um, 60 feet is, just for the, a reference, a, a quick verification, is 60 feet is how much taller than the allowable height?
Uh, it's anything above 40 requires the special use review.
It was 40, 40 was it? Okay. Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to approve action number one, um, for the consideration of the special use permit for the construction of 60 foot tall building.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, second thing.
I know, Pete, could you please state the findings?
Okay. And, and the recommend, and well, and then recommended findings, one through six. Is that, is that what you're looking for?
Yes, please did. Recommend a finding on what page?
On page 13 of the staff report.
Excellent. Thank you. We have a motion to approve.
And a second?
And a second. Commissioner Shaver, excellent. Any discussion? We'll start with Commissioner Shaver.
Well, I think that, um, you know, looking at the, um, comprehensive plan and, um, that we're currently using and, um, the comments that correctly address the, uh, the Wolfson development, it talks about, uh, four and five story buildings. So it, it seems to me that this fits right in with, um, uh, the comp plan and, and almost, uh, exact verbiage. So it's, uh, seems to me it's, it's an appropriate, uh, approval to have for the special use for permit.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Zippoli, please.
Yeah. At first I noticed that, uh, the extra tall ceiling heights on the first and the top floor. But then in looking at the plans, I see that those are, uh, more public spaces. So I, I feel as though those taller ceiling heights are appropriate. And with a view like that, I think I could buy a nine foot ceiling. So I previously was concerned about the height and at this point I'm, I'm pretty okay with it, especially as, um, Commissioner Shaver said, it is in align with the comp plan.
Thank you. Hey, Hannah, just real quick, how much higher is phase three? Did they ask for special use there as well? Since I've, I've heard mention of that, uh, back, even phase one and phase two, I think.
Think phase three is 51 and a half feet approximately.
That sounds accurate as I'm trying to pull that up.
Right. So every single phase has a higher building than 40 feet?
Yes. Phase three also. Yes, phase three also included the same request.
Right. I think I remember that. Okay, thank you. Sorry to jump in, just curious. Any more discussion on the height? No, we'll see none. We'll call for the question. Action, action item number one.
I'm sorry, were you asking me to call the motion? Sorry.
Please.
Commissioner Sipperly. Yes. Commissioner Waller.
Yes.
Commissioner Schacter.
Yes.
Commissioner Wissing.
Yes.
Commissioner West.
Yes.
Commissioner Dem.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you. Moving on to action item number two in planning file fifty-eight dash twenty, consideration of a variance from section BD three C of the Glenwood Meadows zoning and development plan, which limits maximum length of one hundred and twenty-five feet for multifamily buildings. And they want to go up to one hundred and forty feet.
Commissioner, I move to approve item fifty-eight twenty, action item two, the one hundred and twenty-five foot at length variance for a building up to one hundred and forty feet with the findings on page thirteen and fourteen.
All right, thank you. We have a motion to approve.
Oh, second.
And a second. Any discussion? None? Commissioner Schacter. You're muted.
I apologize. I just want to share thought regardless of my vote on the first issue. In this case, I always have a problem with the variance with, particularly with finding number one, because the, or, or rather, the finding one, or finding, finding number three, rather, because I think in almost every case, with a few exceptions, the hardship is created by the design and density and, and wishes of the developer, not by the site. So I wrestle with this often and particularly when it comes on with these older, with our older variance criteria. So I'm not convinced that finding number three would apply and, and hence that therefore number five may not apply. I'm just, I'm wrestling with that as I ponder this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Well, Sumner, I, I echo your comments. I, I feel and I struggle the same way you do. I, I wholeheartedly believe that this hardship is caused by developer and, and not by the site, shape, or whatever, the topography or whatever, none of that. So I, I agree with you that three and five do not apply to this variance request. So I, I'm also going back and forth, but I, I have to be honest, at this point, I'm not sure I can go for the one hundred and forty feet. So that's my two cents. Is there any more discussion? Commissioner Waller, please.
I guess I'm fine with the one hundred and forty feet, given the surrounding buildings and all of that sort of thing. But, but I agree, three and five, I don't know if we should, if you, you know, if you get technical about it, do you amend the motion and, and drop three and five? I, you know, I agree with, with what Sumner said.
Commissioner Zipperly.
I'll point out that both items three and five reference variance criteria one, of which the soil conditions are a major concern. And I do recall this from the other, the other phases in that these hydrocompactive soils have to have a much more extensive foundation. So as the developer had explained before, it will, while they're having to dig about fifty feet down and, and sort of overdig in order to put a suitable structure under this, I would say that soil conditions actually are a hardship that the applicant did not create.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I'm, well, I'm, I'm pretty sure you could create the structure you need under a one hundred and twenty-five-foot building as well, and you don't need a one hundred and forty-foot building. But I appreciate the soil comments, and you're absolutely correct, yes. I still think, well, either way, Commissioner Shaver?
Well, you know, I understand the, the angst that we're experiencing here, because I think you could have that same angst under those criteria. You know, if, if the applicant didn't choose to build, you could say, then, you know, just by building there, creating a hardship under any design, regardless of, of what it is. It just, I, I just think from a more of a practical application of the code, as Carolyn said, the soils issue is certainly one to consider. And, you know, quite, quite honestly, the parking, the efficiency of the underground parking, I think, is something, just from a practical standpoint, not a strict application of the code. So, you know, I would, I would support this motion in spite of, you know, those considerations, which I have some sympathy with.
Thank you. Any more discussion? I just, I just have to come back with, with saying that I, I'm not sure I, I buy the, the one hundred and forty foot needed to build a stronger building compared to the one hundred and twenty-five feet. And I, I understand the soils, I understand all that. And yes, George, you got a good point. Every time you dig, dig the shovel, you basically create a hardship. But I still think, I'm, I'm not sure the one hundred and forty feet is required to, like I said, create, I'm being redundant, to create a stronger foundation or stronger building. I purely think, and that has something to do with the height as well, which I, which I approved on, but I was struggling with that, too. I think it's all coming down to dollars and cents. And I wholeheartedly believe that this is, this hardship is created by design and by, we need to make the numbers work. So I will not support this variance. And with that said, if there's no more discussion, I'll call for the question.
Commissioner Schacter.
No.
Commissioner Wissing.
Yes.
Commissioner West.
Sorry, no.
Commissioner Dem.
No.
Commissioner Shaver.
Yes.
Commissioner Zipperly.
Yes.
Commissioner Waller.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent, thank you, Jen. Good discussion. And let's see, moving on to item, action item three and planning item fifty-eight dash twenty, and that is the consideration of a major site architectural plan review for instruction of a thirty-six unit multifamily building. Entertaining a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve action three, consideration of a major site architectural plan review for the construction of a thirty-six unit multifamily building in the M two mixed-use central core zoning district with the attached recommended findings on page four, fourteen, and the suggested conditions on fourteen with the change that Hannah mentioned, that number eight is now that the developer must construct the improvements for the intersection improvements on Midland.
Excellent, thank you. Commissioner Waller?
A second?
And we have a second. Any discussion on the plan review? Commissioner Schacter.
Where, where's, where's everybody else when we, when we do this? Again, I'm going to, I'm struggling very hard with this regardless of the fact that we've approved very similar projects with the prior phases. And I have no issue with the quality of this, these projects and the fact that either by design or, or by deed, Glenwood Meadows and Glenwood Springs with our approval has created what I'd call more of an urban housing zone within our city, whether it was intended, well, part of it's intended by the code. Nevertheless, when I look at, when I look at, is this plan consistent with goals and objectives of the comp plan? And I'm talking about our situation right now. The comp plan is dynamic. We can, we know we can pick items through the comp plan that we can always find a project in compliance with. And I've already heard that from fellow commissioners, and I, I believe that's true. Nevertheless, part of the comp plan, the purpose of comp, comp plan is to have those individual items that can apply to any project, but also the comp plan states that they should be taken also in an aggregate, aggregate and a whole in evaluating a project. And we're now at phase four, and we've had no diversity of type of housing whatsoever. We've had the same type of housing from all these phases, and we have a stated need in the comp plan, in the current strategic plan by our city, in the prior housing plan for a diversity of housing types, whether it's affordable by definition or community housing or not. And in this case, once again, we do not. And, and the pricing ranges from, I think, in this case, roughly a hundred percent of AMI to maybe a hundred thirty percent of AMI. We can call that under some circumstances affordable. But again, it's the type of housing that we're missing. We don't have deeded housing. We don't have, which would be owner occupied. And we do not have community housing that's been built. So for that reason, again, I am struggling with whether this does indeed, at this particular point in time, fall consistent with our comp plan and the intent of the code. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schacter, any more discussion? Commissioner Shaver?
Well, I don't want to argue, Sumner, but I think just the fact that the existing buildings that are occupied are fully occupied. And I would say the market is saying that it is satisfying community housing.
Well, I would agree, George, community, community housing is different than housing need. We are meeting the needs of a diverse group, but we do not have a diverse type of housing. That's my point. And I think, I think Richard represented the, the diversity of tenants very, very well, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Commissioner Wissing.
I was just going to chime in and say that I use the word angst. I understand the angst about what we're talking about, about this project. But for me, the project works in the context of what is already built. So I think context for me is what's, is pushing this forward versus holding it, which is me having more reservations about it.
You, Commissioner Waller?
I mean, and I, I would agree with Amber. And I think the one, one comment I would make in Sumner, you know, I agree with your diversity of housing. I mean, there is Glenwood Green up there behind it, which is a different housing project that's there. And, and there's quite a bit more space in Glenwood Meadows for whatever sorts of things. You know, this is part of their phase one, two, three, four, so I'm assuming it finishes their project. And then also, I guess, that, you know, they got in right under the wire with the March, by getting in by March thirtieth versus the April first requirements for inclusionary housing and all of that sort of thing. But I, I guess a strong thing for me is what Amber said on the, it's, it's consistent, those four together. And it's, and, and for me, being, being a hundred percent full, it kind of speaks for itself. I think that's what George was maybe getting at, too. So there's my two cents.
Thank you, Pete. And the, let's see, Commissioner Zipperly, there you go.
I do feel like this is infill housing. It's sort of an empty lot in the midst of apartment buildings. One of the other criteria is that we're not making a conflicting with the precedent. And we definitely have set a precedent in approving the three prior phases, that being finding three. So the site architectural plan is not in conflict with precedent land use approval. So I, I feel pretty comfortable in moving this project ahead.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Schacter.
No, I, I appreciate everybody's comments and, and I think my vote may surprise you, but I'm glad Pete brought up Glenwood Green Meadows down the road, if nothing else, is an optimal solution according to our strategic housing plan as our comp plan for additional true community housing, George, not just, and, and other diversity types. So I appreciate what all the commissioners have said and, and I think this discussion is important. If I had my way, I'd push this up, since we're a recommending body. It's going to go up to council anyway, but I couldn't let this pass without mentioning the comp plan and diversity of housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schacter and Commissioner Zipperly.
I had one quick question with a proposal that we looked at a few months ago. We had required three different types of housing. Is that something that we set up only with PUDs? And maybe this PUD was set up without that requirement? Because the other one had townhouses, live, work and rental apartments. So why is this one different?
I'll take that one if I can. So yes, this is a PUD with its own requirements, but also for that aspect, that only kicks in at a certain size of lot. So I forget the specifics, but it needs to be over a certain amount of acreage for that requirement to kick in, which would not be triggered by this development either. So both aspects there. You got it.
All right, thank you, Hannah. Any more discussion? No, well, I got, I got two cents, not worth much more than that, but Sumner, I echo your comments. Thank you very much for the comp plan comment. Also, I, I'm struggling with adding more units to an area. And, and I understand the precedent that we set, and I understand that the surrounding areas, yes, it looks like it would fit. It doesn't make it right that we need to do this the way it's planned. And, and yes, Richard, your product is great. It's, I like the quality. It's all good. Still, it doesn't make it right. I, I am more concerned about the safety, and that comes in regards with the streets that are over there and other infrastructure issues we have. And, and to me, before we start paying attention to infrastructure issues and actually do something about it, I find it a bit irresponsible to add more car trips to any street, especially Wolfson. So that to me is comp plan. It says something about safety and welfare of inhabitants in the city of Glenwood Springs, and I struggle with that one. So I don't think I will support this architectural site plan based on that. So if there's no more discussion, I will call for the question.
Commissioner West.
Yes.
Commissioner Dem.
No.
Commissioner Shaver.
Yes.
Commissioner Zipperly.
Yes.
Commissioner Waller.
Yes.
Commissioner Schacter.
No.
Commissioner Wissing.
Yes.
Motion passes. Motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time, Richard. Thanks for coming back twice and thanks commissioners for ironing this out and good luck with your development.
Thank you so much, everyone, for the time. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. So that said, we're going to lose a few people here before we move on to planning file eighteen twenty-one, which is also continued item. And I think that's the, uh, planning and zoning bylaws that we need to talk about. Yeah.
Good evening, commissioners. This is, um, yet again, another draft of the bylaws that we talked about last time. I think I have incorporated, uh, Commissioner Sipperly's changes. Um, I think the only additional change is one that we talked about at the, um, at the work session, uh, which was related to the timing of, of work sessions, the actual, I think we, it originally had said six thirty to eight thirty. Um, and it has been changed to say six to eight. And with that, I'm open to any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you, Jen. And questions or comments regarding to the bylaws? And I'm trying to find my redlined copy here. I think it was the, was it the last one? No. Oh, there it is. Okay. Any discussion? I'll start. Um, meetings shall not continue past eleven PM nor agenda and shall be taken up after ten PM. Um, didn't we have it somewhere that we can actually take up another item after ten if we vote on it? Shouldn't we keep that just to move things through and not move it to the next meeting? We don't have to?
I think we talked about it, Marco.
I thought so too. What did we say?
But do we want to do, I think part of, part of what I recall is you've got commission fatigue at some point. So it's one thing to be continuing an item. It's another thing to be bringing it up. And I know Carl had something to say about, uh, whether we should do it regardless.
I think we talked about it and I think that's what you wanted to have happen, Marco, and I'm not sure the rest of the commission was on the same page. And I think what the question, the real question is, is can you, um, can you actually take up a new item after ten o'clock and finish it by eleven?
Right.
And is that fair to an applicant after four and a half hours of commission hearing to take that item up? In terms of fatigue, I, I don't know the answer to that, but I think that the question to the former is really an important one. You know, what, what do you get done if you have gone past ten o'clock with the prior item? What do you have? What can you get done in the remaining?
Fairway.
I guess I was, I was more thinking about the scenario where it's, you know, exactly ten o'clock and we finished it and it's like, all right, we have this shorter one that we could probably do in forty-five minutes, fifty minutes. Shouldn't we attack it and get it done instead of moving it to next month?
And we always have the option to continue it still, we.
Well, do we have Marco in the case you just said, can we do a unanimous override? Isn't that part of the bylaws?
It used to be in there, but I don't know if it still is.
I think it's redlined and maybe I misunderstood.
I don't have the redline version. Yeah.
No, it says, meeting shall not continue past eleven PM. No agenda item shall be taken up after ten PM. We could reinsert the unless approved by unanimous vote of the commission.
But not.
I could have under, I could have misunderstood as well.
Right, but not when the agenda was prepared, just, just as an, an, an anonymous, unanimous vote of the commission. If we feel like we.
And I think that other part is related to the conversion of it from being a scanned copy. So, um,
Sorry. Yeah. No, it's so I'm, I'm, and I'm fine with that, Marco. If everybody is, is comfortable, you know, moving on past ten with a new item, I think that's fine as long as it's unanimous. I will. You guys are pretty collegial about all of this. I mean, I remember the days when there's a similar, uh, provision for the city council and, and we had one counselor who just, you know, it's eleven for city council and they were just like, I'm, I am done at eleven. I'm not going to be part of the unanimous vote. And so, and I think that's important to like, understand where you're at as a person.
Well, but again, if it's not unanimous and one of you has enough, but then we're done. I get it. But I think at least we give an applicant a chance to get his whatever, variant, whatever it was, done.
When have we, you've got the longest tenure, tenure, Marco. When when have we had an agenda item that was done with, in less than thirty minutes? Other than, other than our own internal stuff.
No, we, we, there are some things you can, you can move through. There really is. We've done it before. We've done stuff in forty-five, fifty minutes.
Well, no, no, wait, wait, forty-five or fifty?
Yeah, half an hour might be pushing it because you guys love.
But we're, but we're saying, we're saying Carl and, and Jen, we're saying eleven o'clock regardless is the cutoff. No, even if we're, and what do you do then? Continue if you haven't?
Yes.
Yeah.
At least we tried to get it done that month. That's all.
I mean, I could see like a simple setback variance being pretty cut and dry and probably could be dealt with in fifteen or twenty minutes. So I think we should allow for this option. Maybe should we, um, put in there that if the developer or the applicant didn't want us to, that they would have a say in it?
Sure.
Maybe they're tired.
Well, I just question our, I mean, not our integrity, but our, our entire fairness quotient. Once you get to a certain point, having done this many times on different boards. I don't know if the applicant gets a fair shake or if even Carolyn in a setback, well, okay, it's only a setback here downtown, but, and we can get it done in fifty-three minutes, but are we really giving it the normal due diligence we would give? I, that, that's my only question.
Well, this is like, you know, the doctors and the mechanics. You get fifty-three minutes for a setback variance. That's it. Everything that goes over is just too much. No, I, I, I get it. Some, I understand, but I'm just looking to thirty days.
Expedite.
Some people is a long time to have to wait if, if we can really do it. And yes, there may be some issues and yes, we tried and sorry, it's one minute to eleven. We have to continue it after all. That, yes, that can happen.
I don't have a problem really, Marco, because it takes unanimous vote and, and depending on what you're bringing up, that may determine what that unanimous vote is anyway. If it's not something simple, I have no problem objecting.
Yeah, it's not going to be three hundred and sixty units in wrestling. I'm not doing that.
I also, I also like Carolyn's input of that, that it's not only yes, but it could be the applicant. The applicant could say, you guys are like Gaga and, um, you know, I mean, I mean, exactly what you're saying, Sumner, that, that, that it could be good or could be bad, that you're not putting the, the right time into it. So the applicant could request, you know, to say, hey, even though you guys, I, I would like to push this to a continuance the next time.
So do we just, do we start, insert then, um, Carl and Jen, do we just insert a clause is also subject to the, to the agreement of the applicant?
I mean, I think you could. There's not, I mean, I think that you're, you do that. These bylaws are, you know, it's for your document. I mean, I, I, I don't think.
Don't need to.
I, I don't, I don't think you guys probably need to, and I would keep it so that it's an internal conversation, but I do think it is, um, you know, it's a very valid point. And I think you guys would ask that regardless. Um, and you might even ask that earlier in the evening because I know that there are times when if you, you know, if a hearing goes long and you're paying, um, you know, like Chad, who's, who's waiting for the next item, um, you're, you're paying your, your team of professionals, um, by the hour and it's, you know, fifteen hundred dollars an hour to have them sit and wait on the, on the offhand chance that they may go that evening. Um, you know, I think those are the, the real conversations that really matter. And I know Pete's been there as a developer, um, as well. Um, you, you know, in that position where you're like, yeah, do I, do I wait it out or do I cut people loose or what do I do? And, and it can get to be an expensive evening without any progress.
Okay.
Would we have like, uh, maybe at a recess kind of, uh, ask the people who are scheduled for later on the agenda?
Yeah, no, and that's.
They want to jump out.
Yeah, those conversations are almost always going on, um, between staff and applicants, um, team oftentimes as to like, kind of where we're at, when we're expected to get there, what, you know, I mean, those kinds of things. Cause if you're stacked behind a really big application, um, you know, it's always nice to know at least what our best guess is on, on when you're going to be up. So, you know, and we always try to communicate that. And I know Marco is as a long time chair and is that we do that, you know? That, that's part of what we do out there in the audience. Uh, it's a little harder in this format, frankly, um, than it is when we're all in the same room and, you know, you can check in with people.
Okay, well.
I think so. I think the, um, I think Marco was making a, a motion to approve them with the addition of unless unanimous consent of the commission on the going past ten. Is that what I heard you say, Marco?
Absolutely. Yeah, every, everything else looks fine to me going through the red line. I, I just, that caught my eye. Just because I've been there and then, and it made sense to do that.
You know, I, I had a question on, on one other thing. Um, and, and, you know, I, I listened to the tape and I heard the arguments and I know the lawyers had yelled at me and whatnot, but, um, who cares what the lawyers have to say sometimes? But, but it is the, and, and I think Carolyn brought it up on, on the site visit thing and, and, um, and, you know, I get trying to not have another, you know, you don't want the van, you got another fricking meeting, you got to set up and everyone's got to be there, all this. But I, and, and, and you know, Marco kind of said, well, hey, I think it's working good now. And I almost thought, do I say nothing? But, you know, when, you know, when I view it as, as, as my responsibility as a commissioner to, you know, to, to read the, read the staff reports and to go through and decipher whatever I can out of, you know, five hundred pages of application that's submitted, but, but I also like just driving or just to have a feel for it. You know, you can't get everything you get from a, from just reading the documentation and, and, and I'm not saying it doesn't need to be a big official thing, but it just helps me understand, um, you know, you know, for, for example, the, the, the thing that happened tonight, when I drove by, then I could really feel here's what the surrounding area looks like. And it's not a big deal thing, you know, it takes ten minutes that you might drive by, but, um, anyway, I'm kind of tossing out there. I was trying to find out where the site visit wasn't here, but I could find it the other day when Carolyn went through her twenty-five items of all of the things that needed to be fixed, but I couldn't find it now.
But you, you can always drive by by yourself, right? We can always go visit it on our own. You just can't.
They said that we shouldn't because.
Carl was yelling at us, I think.
Yeah.
I was yelling at you and, and here's, here's the difficulty is that you all are supposed to be making the decision on the information in the record that is available to everyone, right? So that's where we run into a problem with kind of the individual sort of site visit, if you will, right? Because then I mean, general knowledge, we've all driven on Wolfson Road, right? Like, um, where it gets a little funky is, um, if you get out and start wandering around the property and you're like, hey, I saw this tree in the back that I really want to save that I didn't like. On the site plan, it just shows it as a tree, but it's this other thing. And so I'm going to vote against this application because I want to save the tree. Well, the rest of the commissioners haven't been there. They haven't done that. That's information that isn't generally available to the entire commission. Um, I, I think that, um, you know, I, I don't really know what the answer is on a site visit because I do, I, you know, I'm a very visual person too, Pete, and I, you know, it helps me enormously when I am working on projects to see physically where things are at. So I think it really becomes a question of if the commission is committed to the idea of showing up forty-five minutes early to do a site visit and they're willing to do that, then, then that's fine. Um, it's great that we have seven of you tonight. I will again, reiterate that on the largest land use application we've had in a long time, I had four of you. So like the odds of getting you all to show up to a site visit, I, I hope if we would do that, that everybody would show up for the site visit, right? Like that's a commitment that needs to be made.
Well, is, 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 is there a difference between a site visit and Marco's thing of like a drive-by?
There again, if you're making your decision on the drive-by, that's information that's not in the record and generally available to everybody, right? Um, and importantly not, you, you don't have, I mean, the applicant has no, like, you know, there again, it's like, do you want the judge going out and
Yeah, I get it.
Evaluating the DUI scene without talking to anybody about the fact that he went out and did that, or she went out and did that. That's really what we're, I mean, that's really the, what makes this hard. Um, I guess suggestion would be as if it would be okay with the commission. Um, let us kind of discuss at the staff level again, how we can make the mechanics of that work if we can and then come back with a proposal. But like I said, I think the thing for you guys to think about is it's going to add forty-five minutes or an hour to that day that is then running till ten or eleven o'clock at night.
So Carl. I recall doing it on the night of the meeting and the night before. We've done both. And personally, if I'm already spending an evening with all of you, let's make it longer. Enjoy every minute of it. So we started at five. I think sometimes at four thirty, when it was multiple items, we did. Sumner.
Yeah. So related to this, Carl, I, um, maybe you can fill us in in the future about the legal background, but it seems like two things. One, there might be projects where it benefits us to do what Marco said, go as a commissioner that night, whoever's going to be there. I could see that, but, but regarding the drive-by and like you said, the, use the tree analogy, all these locations are of public record. So everybody knows where they are, both commissioners and public. So it seems, and I'm asking a legal opinion, if, if people did their individual drive-bys, visits, whatever you want to call them, that's all public record. And then during the commission meeting, rather than, rather than taking your example, oh, I saw this tree. I want to save it. If, if, if the response to the commissioners seeing that application or that applicant site generated questions in the commission. Now those are then fully vetted by the entire commission and public. I, it might be a fine line, but it seems like particularly in a community where everybody knows the site anyway, it would be more, it'd be how you, how you present your question is more important than whether you saw the site. I don't know. But, and I know it's a slippery slope, but it's.
It, it is. Um, and, um, you may have noticed that land use hearings are becoming more contentious. Um, and so all of these small details are ones that Jen and I agonize over as well as the rest of the planning staff, but we're primarily tasked with agonizing over them so that everybody else can do their job. I, I think Jen had something she wanted to say.
Well, I, I think that, you know, the example that I always use is drainage. Um, it's particularly, um, an issue here sometimes because, I mean, as we're dealing with things in the canyon, I think that sort of illustrates the point that one day there could be water on the site that is different from if you go the next day and there isn't water on the site and that could change your mind. So it's important for everybody to go and see the site at the same time. Um, the tree isn't going to move, but drainage concerns here could be different from day to day in terms of viewing the site. Um,
As long as we don't talk about the drainage while we're on the site together.
Right. So you could all talk about it together. I mean, you can all see the same thing together and then you ask questions about it in the hearing related to the drainage. So, um, that's, that's an example that I, that I use often. Um, because it might dramatically change the way you feel about how it meets the standards in the code. The other thing is that you, you always have the option of holding over the hearing and asking for more information. And sometimes that information might be, we would like to go to the site. So I think that that is, you know, I think that may be how we ended up with the site visit for Belropi. So you have the opportunity to ask altogether.
That was one of the last ones we did.
It was. Um, and, and then obviously we, um, there's been a lot of intervening stuff happening worldwide. Um, so I, I, you know, um, and, and that's why I wanted to, I think that, um, there again, I, I'd almost like to pause this and get to Chad's application. and and that's why I wanted to, I think that there again, I I'd almost like to pause this and get to Chad's application because it's a continuance and come back to this because I like, I've been that guy, the one guy in the waiting room. So if we'd be okay with you guys, can we like continue this for a few minutes and maybe jump to that other agenda item, Marco?
Sure, that's no problem. Do we do we actually, I'm just, is there more that we need to say about the bylaws right now? Or should we kick it back?
I mean, I guess what I was going to say is maybe we bring this back and have, I'd I'd love to update it for the next work session. Maybe we have a quick, like, ten minute discussion on on the site visit and let us talk about. I I have some ideas that might like, you know, whether it's when we do an agenda preview of the underneath the director's comments at the end and you guys go, oh, that may be one that we want to see and then we can do that. So that we're not doing it forever, because there are a lot of applications you guys don't really want to go on site visits for, right?
So should we just kick this to next month then?
Sure.
And and you guys bring back some some ideas and we'll just hash it out then.
Can we approve it at the work session?
Sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I Jen has something else for the work session that I think.
Well, no, I mean, it would have to be a special meeting. You can't
Just talking about what the the potential changes were and then they'd approve them at the next meeting.
Sure, we could talk about it, but I think the question, we can't approve it at the workshop.
Okay, then, yeah, that was my question, yeah.
No, we're gonna talk about it and come up with a solution. Carolyn, quick.
What I was wondering is how we craft the agendas and how come we have people waiting for after we discuss our internal business to discuss their new business and can we
Continued items first.
So it can't be like an internal thing.
It's like just, we generally do continued items and we actually thought this would take like forty five seconds.
It's one of those ten o'clock
About going past ten o'clock and what can we get done?
That's the one right here. All right. Do we need to officially continue this or can we just leave it alone?
No.
Officially.
You just officially continued it as chairperson. Let's move on.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough. Excellent. Thank you, everybody. And sorry, Chad, but let's see, our new planning item sixty dash twenty requests to continue major site architectural plan review application for the construction of three hundred unit multifamily development in fourteen separate buildings in Glenwood Meadow, and they're requesting to continue this to the August twenty fourth, two thousand twenty one meeting. So I'm intending a motion to continue this.
I'll move with planning item sixty twenty that we request, we grant the request to continue to our next scheduled meeting.
I second.
Motion second, any discussion on the continuance? No, we'll see none, then I will call for the question.
Commissioner Wissing?
Yes.
Commissioner Schacter?
Yes.
Commissioner Waller?
Yes.
Commissioner Sipperly?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver?
Yep.
Commissioner Dem?
Yes.
Commissioner West?
Motion passes unanimously, right? Excellent. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Chad, for waiting. See you next month. All good. So we're done with the bylaws. We're done with that. Commissioner comments already. We're actually done. Uh, let's see, start with Commissioner Zippel.
I I think I've had my fair share of comments already this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Spector.
Just one thing that came out of this application, and I didn't ask the applicant, but I'll ask Hannah. Given what's going on in context now, do we have something in the code or should we be considering something where an applicant presents a wildfire evacuation plan for their project given a certain size?
We do not have anything specifically related to evacuation in oh, seven oh outside of access and circulation, which obviously plays into that. So it could be something to consider for Planning and Zoning Commission.
I think it'd be worth a discussion, both legally and practically, how we could do it, or whether it's a total community plan and not an issue of the applicant, but I think it's worthy of a discussion that we haven't had.
And if I may, I I think that that is something that will be part of the comprehensive plan discussion that you will be having because the hazard mitigation and resiliency is a requirement of a a comprehensive plan that's funded by DOLA.
And that's all I had. And thank you all.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Wissing.
Anything really to say? Does anyone have an update on like, what are you guys doing about replacing Gretchen? Is she being replaced? Are you guys just restructuring? Are you not allowed to talk about it?
Well, can I just, can I jump right in here and say that Hannah is has accepted the position to be the assistant director? So we're very excited about that. And sorry if we didn't send you an announcement. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Waller.
Welcome, Hannah. Woo hoo. That's great. And then and the the one thing I had was on the work sessions, I saw that you deleted all of them. Maybe it's because I'm an alternate. I didn't see a new schedule for them, but are they going to be the week before or?
It was a time change.
And we had to have IT do it because Gretchen had set them up. And so we haven't yet reset them up, but the the ones that were sent from Gretchen have been deleted with the help of IT department.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that was what I saw. I mean, I knew there was a time change, but I just didn't know. Should I should I block my schedule back because they they went adios? Okay.
Yeah, we'll keep doing it. I'm gonna try to attend the next one. Commissioner Shaver?
Well, congratulations, Hannah. That's a that's a fabulous choice, in my opinion. And in relation to what Sumner was saying about fire evacuation, there was discussion about, you know, under the annexation of West Glenwood about a you know, a multi-agency system or a plan being put together. Has anything happened in that regard yet?
Um, I I guess what I would say is that I don't really want to have a lot of discussions about it because, as you know, that that hearing in front of council is starting this Thursday. I will tell you that from an interagency standpoint, those conversations are ongoing all the time. And I think just from a traffic management standpoint, what you're seeing with the closures in the canyon is reflective of that interagency cooperation.
Good. Thank you. And uh, that's all I have for now. Thanks.
Thank you, George, and Commissioner West.
Excited for an in person next month.
Let's wait to hear what the CDC says next tomorrow.
Better have like Prime River or something for dinner. I'm just saying.
Eat Prime River with a mask on him.
No shitty Chinese.
Excellent. Thank you, Ben. I got nothing. I think I I think it's important that we agree to disagree. So we have great discussions. We did that tonight. Thank you all. And director's comments. So the next workshop, quick, Jen, is on the seventeenth. Like, has been scheduled, so we're going to keep that. It's coming back at some point, and then the meeting is on twenty fourth.
Yes, correct. I just wanted to make sure the dates are right. Yes.
Yeah, I think I just looked them up. So I think that's what I got. So cool. Anything from you?
Just that we put out the RFP for the comprehensive plan today. So you know, it'll be open until the end of August and and then we'll go from there in terms of picking a consultant. And hopefully then we would get it on the one more meeting. Let's see here, we would get it on the approval for city council for the sixteenth. We would of September would not likely actually issue a notice to proceed until we have completed a community survey. I don't know if you've heard a city council talk about that at all, but they are interested in seeing more a a more robust community survey piece that's part of this. And just in terms of the grant criteria and some other things that we decided that we wanted to go ahead of the the comprehensive plan with with that. So we're going to make a final internal, just we're gonna have an internal discussion about who ultimately will do that, those questions. So we will so if you have any ideas, if you just individually send them to Hannah and to me, actually to Trent and to Hannah about what those questions are that from your perspective, you'd like to see asked in the community survey, we're gonna try to turn that around pretty quickly because it does take a little bit of lead time to get those out in advance of that, you know, the question's actually going live. So if you have a few questions that are kind of burning that you feel are related to the comprehensive plan, we'll certainly look back at at the items that you've already mentioned as it relates to that, to try to make sure that we incorporate them. We don't have unlimited questions, so we may not exactly ask your question in the way that you wanted to, but we will, we're gonna try to get, you know, that kind of overarching kind of feeling about about Glen Springs as part of that effort. And I think that's it.
Oops, there we are. Okay. Excellent. Thank you, Jen.
Ben, a sec?
Yeah.
Out of line, but Carbondale is going through a revision of their comp plan right now, and it's all over Facebook and they've got surveys. And they're having a pretty lively discussion about it. So I'm hoping that maybe ours can also be on social media. So we get some some good input like they seem to be doing.
Yep. So two components, one, which will be the community survey, which will go in advance of the process, but then the comprehensive plan itself will have its own. We've asked in the the language for the RFP for for them to be innovative in the way that they approach that outreach. So kind of two components of outreach.
Cool. Amber?
Well, just a quick clarifying question so that people don't get in trouble on Facebook. Carl, are we, if widely discussed, are we, coach me here, because I don't want to mess this up.
I I I think the easy one is, don't join a Facebook group that either supports or opposes an applicant. I think that's like, you know, that's the big one. On the comp plan, I think, you know, you're going to get a lot of, you're going to hear a lot of stuff out there from a lot of different channels. And and I think that's fine. I guess I would probably not as a commissioner, I I prefer you weren't out there advocating a particular position or idea regarding the comp plan until it comes in front of you guys and and it really is your document. So I I'd really, it would be great to see you guys not engage heavily in the the conversation on what you think should be in or should be out while the public is doing their engagement piece. Because that's really the time for you to listen. And when that public engagement piece comes to an end and you've gotten all that information and we're starting to put it together, that's really when, you know, that's when it becomes your working document to talk about what should be in and should be out and what did you hear? And how does the community feel about those issues? So I I guess that I don't know if that helps.
So for example, let's say there's an open forum. We can watch it go, let's say the city of Glenwood.
Right, yeah.
We can watch it go past, we just can't. Thumbs up, whatever.
Yeah, no, exactly. And I think watching it pass, I think that's fine, especially because this is really a a living legislative document, if you will. It's very different than a site specific application. I just know that it can really influence the public if they're like, oh, well, Amber said, you know, we shouldn't have any more development, you know, in X place or Y place. And that that can really start to shape a conversation. Because whether you believe it or not, you kind of are opinion leaders in the community.
There's no conflict, Carl, for us encouraging people to be part of the process.
Absolutely not. And that, I mean, that's incredibly important for you to be out there encouraging. And and that's a great example, Sumner, with you and your involvement with other groups to, you know, to go to those groups and be like, hey, get in it, really looking for large engagement on this, please engage. Or if you're a member of Rotary or, you know, whatever it is, I mean, down to the book club level, frankly, you know, anything that helps, I think, really, and council's really interested in getting a a broad cross section of the community too. And so, you know, there's going to be, I think, a real concerted effort to to reach out to segments of our community that historically don't have the time or the the ways to normally kind of channel and be part of those conversations. You know, if you're leaving the house at six every morning, you you know, because you and your wife are are working jobs in construction, whether that happens to be here in Glenwood, if you're lucky, or, you know, you're working in the hospitality industry and you're working mid valley or up valley, or, you know, and you're getting back at eight o'clock at night, it's pretty hard to feel like you want to engage. And I think that's a piece that we have missed historically, just because we've always taken the approach like, well, you just need to show up and tell us. And so we get the same, they're great people, but we get the same hundred people that show up to everything, right? The goal here is to get the fifteen thousand nine hundred that don't normally show up.
Excellent. Pete?
One, one question I had was, so we talked about the site visit and then we continued Chad. And that's a big mother project, you know, that's that's out there. And and I, you know, I don't know what's going to happen, Hannah, you know, for I guess it's Trent's project or whatever, but but is that one, it seems like that's a big one that would be that falls in the site visit type of thing. And maybe it's not next time, maybe it's a time after. I don't know how the agenda gets built or that sort of thing, but I just thought I'd toss that out there because it's not, you know, it's many units.
Good point that you brought up. We do have for the next meeting that one that you just continued as well as another, I would say, I would call it a midsize residential project that's coming forward. So it is going to be a long and big meeting for you guys. I don't know about how Carl and Jen feel about a site visit for this one on Trent's project.
I I would be fine with it. We will probably need to to send you some emails about the coordination piece of that. So be happy to do that. I will just remind you that we will be eliminating your favorite part of the COVID protocol, which is holding over the discussion or holding over the vote into the next meeting. So you are free to hear the item, ask all the questions, hear from the public and vote at the next meeting. So just putting that back on the table.
Yeah. And I guess I'm gonna, because you're gonna be hearing me be relentless about this. I'd just like confirmation from everybody that they're going to be at the next meeting.
What is the date?
You can't miss
August twenty four.
Afraid so.
Yeah, it's the only one I'm always hoping. I'm like, is Sumner gonna say no? Is he gonna say no? Like, no.
I'll say no if you want me to.
Nah.
shorten the meeting a bit.
Thank you. I appreciate that because it's it's incredibly, you know, we're we're seeing some big applications or important applications and it really matters. And so I appreciate it a lot. I know it's it's going to be a heavy lift the next few months.
All good. Great. Anything else? Everybody happy? You look happy. So if I don't see anything else, I enjoy the rest of your evening. Seven forty six. Excellent. Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.